Extra chairs right up here. If you gals want to come up.
They're all taking them.
They're not coming. We've got three chairs right here. And there's some out in the other room, so when I tell you what, I haven't started the meeting, but what I'll do is I'll call your school, because I know you gals and guys are here for that, and you'll want to get pictures and things, and so I'll make sure that everybody gets in this room to get the pictures of their schools and their students and everything. How's that? So if you can find a chair out there, we're just going to do the pledge and a couple of things and get right into it, I promise. All right. Yes, you do.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to make a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lester.
Can y'all hear me?
No.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Certification, closed session. Pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712D, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Emotion Act, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was departure from the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Horace Christian?
Yes.
Luanne Wallace?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we will start our acknowledgements, which is what I was referring to a minute ago, and so we're going to start out with District One and Two, which would be Castlewood High School, and Mr. Lovelace will be presenting those awards, and so Ms. Vance will be helping with that. And at this time, I've got my little paper, but I've got it buried, so give me just one minute to find it, Ms. Vance, you gave it to me. Oh, okay, we do, don't we? All right, hang on just a second. Invocation. All rise.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, we do not deserve the grace that you have given us. We thank you for allowing us to come out and recognize these special people, Father, for all the special accomplishments that they have received, Father. Forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, be with us, and take us home safely, for it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Okay. So at this time, we're going to need the approval of the agenda. I do think we have some additions.
Madam Chair, I request that the real estate tax extension date be added to the county administrator's request as item number four, and numerically change order all the way through number fifteen.
Okay, change the tax, it's going to be first on the request of the county administrator reports and requests. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr.? Don't we have something for a special project?
Yes.
I think we need to add an, under the county attorney's report, we need to add an item for procurement of services for a special project.
Okay, you're going to add that at number seven, or?
Seven will be fine.
Seven?
Yeah, there it is.
Seven, special project. Anything else to add to the agenda? Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll need an approval of this agenda, please.
Some movement, Chair.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ray, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have a new agenda. All right, now I'm going to get there. Acknowledgements, thank you. I know you all are so excited, and we're so excited to have you guys here tonight, all of you all, and we're so proud of the accomplishments that you have done and the service that you have shown to our community and been part of the great work of the schools, and so it's our pleasure to welcome you tonight and to give you a tiny little accolade of our appreciation. So I'm going to start out with Mr. Lovelace, you're up first with Castlewood High School, and we're going to recognize forensics with Pam Robertson, coach, and then we'll move on from there, so it's all yours.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, we'd just like to let you come and brag on your students.
Here. Here. Oh, he'll give you one.
They're normally not tardy, he was just texting me and saying he was stuck in traffic, so thankfully he's here. The forensics program is something a lot of people are not really familiar with unless you have kids in it, then you live it and breathe it, I suppose. Skylar McCoy here is a junior at our school, this is his first year in drama. He chose to do a category called extemporaneous speaking. It terrifies me, he's a lot braver than I am. Skylar prepared and studied several current events and topics in the news, he had no idea the questions that would be asked, he knew broad general topics. He did have articles with him, then, once he draws a question, a very specific question often, he has thirty minutes to come up with a speech and to present it, and he was blessed to have, to receive third place at the state level. We also had two other students, two seniors, who placed in humorous duo, and that's a public speaking event in which it's more like a performance. They prepared a piece in which they portrayed a couple of, a little boy and a little girl who met in kindergarten, hated each other's guts, fell in love during their teenage years, and got married and lived to a ripe old age, and they got to portray all those fun ages. Those students that weren't able to come with, be with us tonight, they are watching Hamilton tonight, so I'm pretty jealous of them. But we thank the board so much and thank all of you all for recognizing our students, they've worked so hard, and I'm truly blessed to be their coach, they do a good job.
Thank you. All right, make sure you get your pictures, so if you want to move to the center, I'll direct you right over there, because we want to make sure that everybody gets a picture, including mom, dad, and grandma, grandpa, and the newspaper. All right, let's go, board. We're tucked in, can you see us all?
Okay.
Anybody else want to take a picture while we're here? All right. Thank you. Oh, we appreciate you.
Thank you, good job. You did a good work.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. I say cheers, welcome.
You're not through, Tim.
I'm not. All right, yes, for the wrestling, is Mr. Castle here, or would you like to, is Mr. Robertson, would you?
I never actually saw you on the tennis this evening.
You do for TV.
Then we got you live.
Wrestling is one of those things, it is an individual thing, but it's also a team thing, and it just makes for interesting scoring. I mean, we had some young men go up this year, very fortunate. Brad Steffey, 220-pound weight class, was fifth. Had Sam Gibson, 106, third place. Heath Sutherland, 132, third place. Slade Castle, 126, second place. Jacob Maxfield, 182, first place, and then we had Adam Gibson, who was first place at 113. This is actually his third state championship. The first two came at 106, and then this year he went up to another weight class and won it there again, so. It's pretty impressive. I could never push myself away from the table to make weight, so I admire them, takes a lot of discipline, a lot of dedication to what they're doing, and take six wrestlers up there and we finished fourth as a team. So it's pretty impressive.
So you're going to take those right back to those gentlemen, right? Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Are we going to do a picture for him?
Yes.
Yes? Here we go. Squingy, squingy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate you. Thank you much, I appreciate you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
All right, the next school that we're going to recognize is Honeaker High School, and that's going to be Betty Davis, FBLA winner, Betty Davis, the coach and the forensics teams, and then we're going to have the girls' basketball champions, so we got a house full of girls tonight, don't we? Mr. Eaton, would you like to take care of that for us, please?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Ms. Davis if she would come up and, you can give the information, once you round them all up here. This is a lot to be proud of, this is our future leaders in our area and our county, and we're so proud of all of them.
We actually had three winners at the state level for FBLA this year. We had Cassie Atkins, who is not here with Human Resource Management, Kate Jesse has placed third in accounting, too, and she's here for basketball, thanks. And then Olivia Hale is fourth place with Intro to Business Procedures, so we will be taking two of the girls to Chicago, Illinois, in June to compete nationally for the FBLA, and we're just so proud of them.
Very good.
All right, we got pictures.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, sorry. Thank you.
Congratulations. So proud. Good job.
Good job, good job.
You're doing well.
You all should just stay out there.
The next forensic team winner, Coach Lindsey Venselcoach and Stacy Smith-Lestercocoach.
So our student Natalie Campbell got to compete in the state forensics tournament this year in the category of impromptu speaking, and she placed first in Class One, impromptu speaking. And I just want to add about Natalie, she actually qualified for the state tournament in her freshman year, which was canceled due to COVID, and then got to participate in the state tournament virtually last year, her sophomore year, and placed third, correct, Natalie, in impromptu speaking? So she's a three-peat already, and we're excited to see what she'll do her senior year, so we're very proud.
Absolutely.
There you go, Rob.
Of course, mom and dad's got to get in there.
Yeah, come on, Mitchell. Come on, Mitchell. Come on, hey. Come on. Come over here, come on, come on. The whole family. Come on. Come on. All right.
Hold Carl's arm.
Very good. Thank you all. Congratulations, Natalie.
Mitchell, how you doing? Oh, no, no.
Hey, good job. See you.
Thank you all.
Yep.
All right, David?
Okay.
You want to do this one?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, we have the girls' state basketball champions with us here tonight, head coach Misty Miller. Assistance, yeah. Assistance, Darrell Davis, Steve McNulty, Chris Anderson, Brandon Miller, I'll let Coach Miller come on in and announce these girls. I believe they're three-peat, right? Three-peat state champions, so I just want to make you aware of that.
Three-peat.
Three-peat.
Thank you all for having us tonight, we appreciate this. I'll introduce our team, Kylie Vance, she's a senior this year. Taylor Nolly, sophomore.
Come on.
Yes, I'm proud.
Come on.
Abby Farmer, sophomore. Julia Barton, freshman. Callie Miller, a freshman. Kate Jesse, sophomore. And we have Laura McClellanhand and Riley Hart and Kylie Ray, they have a softball game today, they couldn't be with us, and Elena McNulty, she has basketball this evening, and Valley Stevens had her tonsils taken out, so she's still a little under the weather. But I'm so blessed to be able to call these girls my team, they've worked extremely hard. We've been successful the last couple of years, we knew we lost three great players last season, and we knew that it was a challenge for everybody to step up and play a different role, and these young ladies just worked extremely hard, and they did, they did just that, they stepped up for us and played such a great season and a great team, and I feel very blessed to be a part of it.
Get everybody in front together. Caleb, we're good? We're good?
Thank you, okay.
Got it? Very good.
Wow, thank you so much, congratulations. I think this is going to be more than a three-peat, this is going to be a four-peat, five-peat for you, David.
I believe so.
You've got some freshmen and sophomores in there, they're going to come on strong. All right.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. I wanted to kind of say this toward the end of the meeting, but I'm going to go ahead and get it out there, seeing we're doing the acknowledgements. We've been really blessed in southwest Virginia in this region. I guess you all have seen the news where Jordan Stout, that played for the Honeaker Tigers, just got drafted by the Ravens. That makes her second person here in the Honeaker area, that Heath Miller went to Pittsburgh, and now Jordan's going, I'm telling you, we are truly blessed. We have got a lot of good athletes, Castlewood, Lebanon, Honeaker, and you can tell tonight it shows up. I mean, it could be in academics, it could be in sports related, or whatever it may be, but we are truly blessed, and we are so grateful, because you will be our next leaders one day, and you'll be taking these seats and helping to move this county forward, and I'm just so appreciative.
Thank you, David. All right, next we've got Lebanon High School, so Mr. Breeding and anybody else that needs to go help him?
Okay, we have, this is congressional ad challenge, Virginia District Nine, first-place winners for Lebanon High. Jamie?
Hurtie.
Jamie, you want to go ahead and call your girls?
Are your team? Wait a minute, we want to hear you.
This is Christian Music. Theodore Boyd, and other members of the team was Ava Deckard and Bella Ash, Isabella Ashby, and they're playing tennis tonight, so they couldn't be here.
Okay.
But what these guys did, well, I'll tell you, we do have good athletes in Russell County, and we also have some real brainiacs. So here they are. CGI sponsors teams in this area, and they were wonderful to mentor these guys through. They have to come up with an idea for an app, and then actually write the app, and then demonstrate the app working. So CGI mentors work them through that process, they won District Nine. We went on a trip to DC to celebrate, usually they have a big to-do called the House of Code, where they take the kids up there and they do the demonstrations in front of all the people in Congress and everything, but since COVID, they haven't done that, but we decided to celebrate anyway. And we went to DC, and CGI did host us at their headquarters in Fairfax, and they really, they really lit them up, yeah. Well, actually, they said they didn't need the interview.
Oh, that's very good.
All right.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
You guys were very creepy.
Good, good.
All right, Steve, he's got more.
Got more.
Okay, the next, next, next is, or 2022 VHSL Theater Festival group, A Outstanding Actor is Madison Huffman. Madison, come up here. What did, how did, how did you compete? Did you have parts you had to play, or?
With our one-act competition, we do a thirty-minute play, we have ten minutes to strike and set the stage, and then we have thirty minutes to put on our play and then strike and take it all back down.
Wow.
We did Orphan Trains this year, we have so many great actors, and I'm really blessed to have them as my team.
You did an outstanding job. Let's move over here and get a photograph. Certainly expect to see you on the stage in our picture.
Come on.
Come on, come on, we, we got to get everybody in here. Congratulations.
Somebody's got to be the star.
Congratulations.
I'm Sarah Stutes, and I am the forensics and I'm the theater coach. Before I talk about forensics, I'll talk a little bit about Maddie's award. So when we go to state theater festival, four teams go in the state of Virginia in our Group A, and they only choose the top four actors or actresses at the end to, to recognize, and Maddie was one of those four. It was actually also our team's first time going to the state championship, so we had a really good year in theater, and we are, we are thankful for that. Thank you so much for having us. The next thing that we're going to talk about is state forensics, which we're really excited about. We took ten students to state forensics in Midlothian, Virginia, and all ten students placed, and we became the 1A state champions this year, so.
Wow.
And about half of our team is not here tonight because there is a girls' and a boys' soccer game tonight, but I'm going to tell you about our amazing team, and we'll start with Brianna Johnson, who was a state champion in original oratory, she's not here today, but, so she has to write her own speech, and she delivers, she has ten minutes to deliver it, and she was a senior this year, and I'm glad that she finally got that state championship, so really proud of her. The next group of state champions who are not here is a serious duo team, and that is Ellen Saunders and Carter Dillon, really proud of them, and they are both coming back next year, so we're excited to see what awesome things that they do for us. All right, got a couple here, Madison Huffman, who you just met, was state runner-up in storytelling. Emma Martin was state runner-up in pros. Emmett, is it soccer? Emmett Breeding, he was state runner-up in impromptu speaking. Then we have another serious duo group, and they are state runner-ups, Cheyenne Ball and Kendra Horn. And then we have two more who are not here with us, they placed third in their events. Brianna Potts placed third in dramatic interpretation, and Gracie Ford placed third in humorous interpretation. So we are really proud of them. Like Ms. Robertson said up here, you know, a lot of people don't know what we do in forensics, but we, we start in January, and we are there every day practicing just like a sports team, and it is some intense competition that we go against, and actually, this year has had its own set of issues, we did not actually get to compete in person until the state meet because of COVID, so the first two rounds were virtual with Zoom meetings, I'm sure you all know how Zoom meetings can be, so these students were acting and performing in their, you know, at the top of their game, but also with all of the problems that happen with technology and internet connections and things like that, so they had a lot of adversity, but they did amazing, and I'm so, so proud of them, they are, hopefully next year we'll go back and show them what we're made of.
Girls, can you speak to you? Just a tag.
Congratulations, this is awesome. Ladies, thank you.
Great job, girl. Oh, look at you girls. Congratulations. You look so beautiful. Great job always. Remember, doing a good job.
Again, thank you.
Okay.
Is Chris Conley here? Do you hear Chris? Any of the Lebanon co- any of the Lebanon wrestlers? None of them? Okay. We have, again, we have certificates for the, uh, Lebanon wrestling team, Coach Conley. And we have Cole Jesse first place, Colton Barton fourth place, and Isaac Alvera, uh, who's a state qualifier. So we'll have those certificates there from then.
We'll applaud them. All right, thank you to everyone, particularly those who are award winners tonight as we check off our list and move on. Are we good? Thank you, Ms. Vance. All right, we're down to, um, our public hearing, which is, um, VDOT Six-Year Secondary Construction Plan, 2022, 23, 23 through 2027, 2028. So I'll just officially open up the public hearing. If anybody wants to speak to the VDOT Six-Year Secondary Plan, Construction Plan. Anybody? I don't think we have anybody for the VDOT Construction Plan. Mr. VDOT's going to speak.
John, do you want to speak during this?
He didn't act like he was preparing to speak publicly.
The, uh, six-year plan for this year, um, you have your list of projects here that they've, um, they've given you. The only new additions to this are Route 1080 North Cedar Acres, uh, Route 746 Stony Point Drive, Route 801 Steel Hollow Road, and Route 636 Kent Ridge Road. Uh, of those four, Kent Ridge Road is partially funded and the, all the other three are fully funded.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, we'll just close the public hearing for the Six-Year Secondary Construction Plan. And, um, I will open up the floor or the public hearing for the, um, RC Property Right-of-Way, which is Russell County Property Right-of-Way easement to Key Western LLC. Any public comments? Going once, twice. Okay, I'll close the public hearing for the Russell County Property Right-of-Way easement to Key Western LLC. Moving on to new business, I need approval of the minutes, uh, which is in your packet, the unapproved minutes of April 4th, 2022.
Motion to approve those minutes, Chair.
Have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on.
I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Carl. I usually ask for abstentions. Number two in the new business, approval of expenditures, um, those that are considered and presented for payment.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Eaton. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comment period. You're limited to three minutes. Um, do you have some folks that need to speak? Pardon me? Okay. Susan Breeding. Welcome.
I'm here on behalf of the Russell County Public Library and I'm here concerning disparity in wages. It, it appears that since the, uh, minimum wage went up, which was nothing that, that you all had any control over or any, the state made that decision and mandated that, um, that those minimum wages be raised. Unfortunately, that's caused this big disparity in wages. And it's not just in the library, I realize that. It's, it's all across the county. But I'm here representing the library employees in particular. What's happened is you, the minimum wage, that's a great thing. It's helped a lot of people. I understand that. But if you've been in a building working for, for years and all of a sudden this minimum wage takes effect, then you've got people who are, you know, it's narrowed the gap between the, their, uh, wages, which is really unfair. And I realize, um, that the county is up against it this year financially. I know it's going to be a tough year, but I would urge the Board of Supervisors to, um, take this into consideration and, and make this a top priority, uh, in, in some way, um, evening out those wages. And, um, in addition, and as I know this is a tou- going to be a tough year, I just urge you to, um, I, I won't ask for more money, but I'm asking that, that the, uh, library, um, money not be cut because the library's, uh, uh, operating on a bare bones budget as it is. It really is. And much less than, than counties all around us. So, um, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Breeding. Constitutional officers, uh, reports and requests. Do I have any of those this evening? All right, moving on to the county attorney reports and requests. Number one is the Russell County DSS Employee Bonus Ordinance. Your microphone needs turning up.
I don't know if I need to be, oh, is it, oh, it's just on. I'm sorry. I used to have to push it. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I provided, um, I drafted a bonus ordinance, a one-time bonus ordinance, um, based on the resolution that the Russell County DSS Board passed. Um, and that was included in your packet, um, for a, a one-time bonus of $500 and, um, for the board's consideration.
All right, at this time, Madam Chair, as being a board member of the, uh, DSS and the Board of Supervisors, I would like to make this motion be proposed to say an employee bonus ordinance to include all county employees. And I would like for it to be received because of their long hours, the extra work they've put in and their performance for us in this county. And I feel like as being a member of both boards that my fellow board members here want to recognize that. And we're going to cha- and I'd like to change the, um, language just to include to say, instead of just DSS, Department of Social Service, that we say all and that not just the DSS Board members, but the Russell County Board of, um, Supervisors will pu- and we also want to replace the reference amount of money of $500 to $250 for all county members and for it to come out of our American Recovery Money. So therefore, it won't be affecting our county agency budgets. So I would like to make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to change the ordinance that's in front of us from, uh, a one-time. This is a one-time, right? Did you say that?
Yes, ma'am, one time. Yes, ma'am.
All right, a one-time county bonus to all county employees for $250 as opposed to $500. And it's going to come out of the American Recovery Act. And, um, I'll entertain a second.
I'll say that.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a se- second discussion.
Yeah, I'm really confused over this motion, um, because I think the ordinance stated that this went back to their board for consideration. And now what I think Ms. Dyas wanted to do is reduce the amount and offer it to all county employees.
Yes, that's the way I understand it.
Just change it from being a DSS ordinance to making it BS of Board of Supervisors.
But the money that they have that was to be sent back to the state, so you're not wanting to utilize it, you're just wanting to send the whole pot back to the state?
No, I understand. They've been using it. They've been, started ordering things and purchasing things and they are working to, uh, use their money that they've got. As much as they can.
Okay, any more discussion? All right.
This way, it will be coming out of the American Recovery.
American Recovery Act, okay. And so we're still not touching anything else. All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we're moving on to CF Highlands LLC, a deeded gift for the Arti League Campground Parking Lot.
I have, um, reviewed this deed, um, that was prepared, um, by, by a different attorney and it is a deed of gift for, um, recreational use for Russell County for this parking lot. Um, I, I provided it to the board. I've reviewed it. I don't have any concerns with it. I did note that if, if for some reason we did not use it for the intended purposes, it could potentially revert back to, um, the original owners, to CF Highlands LLC or their sons. But I don't think that's a, going to be a, a problem. We intend to use it for parking. So otherwise, I'm good with the deed if the board would like to accept this deed of gift.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Okay, um, we have a motion. I need a second for the gift.
Second.
Okay, very good. Thank you, guys. Okay, we have a motion and two seconds. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Russell County Property Right-of-Way easement to Key Western LLC.
Madam Chair, actually, we have the, um, Building Inspection Services contract.
Oh, it does, and I checked it off. I just zoomed right by that. Uh, and, and that's one of my biggies. Building Inspection Services contract, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is something that, um, we've been working, um, working for behind the scenes quite a bit. And I think we've discussed a little bit for project, um, the Pure Salmon Project or Project Jonah. Um, due to the, to the, um, size of this, um, facility, we, um, it was determined that we needed to, um, contract out services to help with the performance of the Building Inspection Services. And, um, we had, we had done an RFQ a long time ago and entered into competitive negotiation. And, um, Lonzo and I have both reviewed the retainer agreement and MOU and made some suggested changes and are, are comfortable with this agreement. And, um, we're, I'm asking for the board to approve both of those agreements at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept, um, the Building Inspection Services contract. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Now we're down to, um, the Russell County Property Right-of-Way easement to Key Western LLC.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. This was, um, what we had the public hearing on, um, a little bit ago. This, this is in relation to the piece of property that we bought from, um, Key Western for the animal shelter a couple of years back. Um, he, um, there was an issue with, that we needed access to the property and, and, and we did, um, get a, get a right-of-way and to, to enter our property. Um, but he also requested since, um, Key Western owns two pieces of property on, on, one on each side of our property, that to request an easement across the, the property we purchased from him to access the other property. And Lonzo had kind of made that agreement with him when, when the deal was getting made, but it was just something that never got finalized. A survey was done, um, and is this the corrected survey, Lonzo, or is this the old one? Okay, there was some issues, um, with the, with the prior survey. Um, this, I believe, is the corrected survey according, according to Mr. Lester. Um, I had prepared a deed, but I did not have the updated survey. So I'm asking the board to approve this, this right-of-way, um, that's contemplated. You still, okay, okay, so what, what Lonzo, Lonzo was not, um, happy with the parameters that were contained in this one. That's why I didn't know which one it was, if it was an updated one. And so I'm asking the board to approve this conveyance. And I've already, I've already completed the deed. I just need the updated survey to put that in. So to approve this conveyance, subject to final approval of the county administrator and legal counsel.
Might have elaborated a little bit on this. What I'm trying to do with the easement that's coming in onto the property, this is our existing easement that's coming in to the right-of-way. Currently, right now, what had been surveyed is actually taken off the frontage of the property. So I'm asking what the board is upon correction is to go with the, uh, fence line here to move this 25-foot easement in adjacent to and parallel to, uh, the, the fence line. So, uh, Key West LLC has agreed to do it. Uh, we asked for a motion upon the corrected plat and location to be approved upon, uh, county attorney's review.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we're moving on to the Cleveland Ballpark lease.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. This is a lease that I reviewed and also provided to the board. Um, I did not have it in a Word document to retype. I did highlight certain language, um, that I do think needs to be removed from this lease. Um, and I've spoken with Lonzo today and I think this may be the last time we have to contemplate this lease. We're working on some other arrangements, I believe. But I would ask the board to approve this lease, um, with, with the removal of the language that I've highlighted.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from, uh, Mr. Ray. I need a second.
I'll second it.
His motion, I mean, second from Mr. Eaton. All in, uh, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Uh, next, number six, St. Paul Temporary Emergency Agreement for Law Enforcement Services.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, I, um, the sheriff contacted me with this agreement, um, and asked me to review it. And I, I have reviewed it. Um, one thing that I did see, and I still have to get up with the attorney for the town of St. Paul to add a signature line for, for Ma- for Madam Chair to sign if you all approve this agreement. The basis of this agreement is that the town of, the town of St. Paul, their police, they're, they're understaffed right now and they're, um, temporarily wanting to use the services of off-duty, um, deputies. We would be providing the cars and the uniforms, so that's why they're reimbursing the county. I think it's $35 per hour. Um, they do anticipate this via temporary agreement, but since I have not gotten the final one to approve, I would just ask if the board wishes to approve this, to approve it subject to final revisions and changes by legal counsel.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, you, you said the town will be, or the sheriff's officer will be providing the vehicles?
They'll, they'll.
Or the town?
My understanding is that we'll be using our vehicles and that's why the, the county. My understanding is that we'll be using our vehicles and that's why the, the county's being compensated in this way. And so they'll be using, you know, they'll be using their uniforms and our vehicles. So, but it's not a situ, it's not a situation where, where they're on duty in Russell County and just going over there, yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't, I didn't get any specifics, I don't know if Lonzo has on how long they anticipate this to last, but I, I know they're hopeful to, you know, be able to fill their vacancies and so this is not going to be a long-term agreement.
And I've got a question real quick. If we go into an agreement like this, can it also provide these kind of services for other municipalities as well? In regards to the agreement?
Currently, right now, in the sheriff's office with other counties and towns, we have what we call a mutual aid agreement. That comes through emergency management for sheriffs and et cetera. One of the things that they can't do is the sheriff will have to utilize his deputies. These will be off, just like Washington County does for their traffic control over there, their speeding. So y'all all smile on that. But this is a way. This is a way that the sheriff's department can fill in voids, whether it's Homeacre, whether it's Lebanon, or if it's St. Paul, to be able to fill in these services during the meantime and give an opportunity for the deputies to earn this extra income while providing. When we looked at it, the inclusive rate, they stopped the deputies, their benefits and the rest and fuel, we felt comfortable, we're not making money on this, but we're not losing money either.
Well, that, that was my only concern.
Yes, we're not losing money.
Early rate was enough to cover their fuel costs.
That was the first, my first question, yes.
Any more discussion?
And, and I believe, I saw in this lease, it was intended as a six-month. Is that right? Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second, we've had discussion, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, on the county attorney request and report is number seven, Special Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I am requesting for Special Project, or Project M three, for the board to pursuant to their purchasing policy, to hire the services of a consultant for this project. I do think that would be beneficial to see, to further discover if, if this project is going to be something that's beneficial to the county and that the county would like to pursue.
So moved.
Okay, we have a, a motion and I need a second.
I'll second that, as long as it's in accordance with procurement policy.
Yes, your, your, your purchasing policy that's been adopted pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Patton. Next is the county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that's on the county administrator reports and requests for April twenty-two is, of course, everybody's been waiting on her, and I told her not to be nervous. And we've only been looking for a year and a half. Is, I'd like to introduce the Russell County Tourism Coordinator. She is going through an internship through Radford University, she is graduating with honors. Ms. Shilla Little, I would like to introduce her as the intern for the, like I said, the Russell County Tourism Coordinator. And, and she can tell a little bit about herself.
Yes, hello, thank you for having me today. I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Lester for, for allowing me to have this opportunity to return back home. I'm from Castlewood, I grew up there, most of you guys probably know my dad. I don't know if that's a good thing, I'm just kidding. I'm excited to be returning back and promoting the county and everything we have to offer. I'm looking forward to working with each of you and the Russell County Tourism Committee as we move forward to enhance our efforts and our assets in our county. And I'm truly blessed with this opportunity, so thank you. I'm excited, I'm excited.
Was this a five-year term on this?
A ten, a ten-year term. It was, it was. Irrevocable contract.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sha. Thank you so much.
This is such a pleasure, and, and I am just choked up about this. Thank you for accepting the offer.
Of course, I'm so excited, I'm really excited. Me and Mr. Lester had a meeting today and I'm ready to get started.
Good deal.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, you hardly ever find me without words, but I am at this moment. Anyway, the next thing is the Russell County Physical Year Twenty-One Financial Audit Report.
Yes ma'am. Of course, everyone knows that this is the Russell County FY Twenty-One Physical Audit Report, even though we're in twenty twenty-two. Everyone knows of the pandemic, so we had some additional audit procedures that we had to go through because of the, all the federal funding that we had. So we had to do what we call a lot of single audit acts. So we had to have additional auditors in here, which is always fun. And so we had to, really in essence, we had to do a double audit. So again, from the independent auditors of Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates, which by the way, does about sixty-five of ninety-five counties in the state of Virginia, reads this. Opinions, in our opinion, based upon the audit and report of other auditors, the financial statements referred to fire, present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, discreetly presented component units, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the Russell County as of June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And the respective changes in the financial positions were applicable cash flows and oriented in accordance with accounting principles of the general accepted of the United States of America. Now, what that means is that we had a clean audit. In, in accounting terminology, we had trying time during the pandemic. The board supervisors, you know, allocated funds out to the food pantries, emergency management services, schools, sheriff's department courts, and of course, business grants. So we helped everyone that we could and have possibility and that actually needed it during that time for pandemic purposes and businesses and support during the pandemic. So again, I think there was a, and this is between us, is I think there was an eight-cent variance of all the funds. So that's, that's a pretty big accomplishment, able to do a lot of it. So again, congratulations to the Russell County Board of Supervisors for another one. We've also got this trying year that'll be coming up. But also in addition, the, we did additional audit on the sheriff's department on all drugs forfeitures, which I have to, by law, have to acknowledge. It says, based on our audit found the sheriff of Russell County has a system of internal controls that the funds listed is adequate and complying with Virginia Sheriff's Accounting and the Code of Virginia. Next, on the county administrator reports is the Virginia Coalfield Coalition Regional Cell Coverage Project. That's a long one, Steve, how did y'all come up with that title? Great, hey. This is a, a letter of support from the Russell County Board of Supervisors is pleased to support the Virginia Coalfield Coalition in its application for the ARC for planning funds that will support the development of a regional cell coverage study. So this is something that's needed in. Y'all been hearing about the broadband? Mr. Breeding, Ms. Wallace is sitting on the Cumberland Plateau, spearheading both the cell and the broadband projects. And this is a letter of support in the ARC additional funds for cell tower coverage. Next, on the county administrator reports is, is the VDOT Six-Year Secondary Construction Plan that you heard from VDOT previously, from John. I need, I'm sorry, I gotta back up.
Yes.
I gotta, I called myself, thank you.
Number four.
Number four. Next, on county administrator reports is a resolution due to the, we just went through the audit, but also we're currently going through the budget process. And everyone knows that the state of Virginia, between the House and Senate, have still not came up with a state budget yet. So of course, for us as the county, we've got to do our planning, everything is set in by the due date. So the res, I've got a resolution before the board supervisors for the real estate taxes extended due date for the calendar year, calendar year twenty twenty-two tax year to move from the, from May, the, May the twenty-fifth to June the twenty-ninth. I need approval.
Make a motion, we approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, we'll be sending out formal notices to the general public for all the residents that the date has changed in the paper. It'll be up on the treasurer's website and the county's website for notification. Next, on the county minister reports, we're back to the VDOT Six-Year Construction Plan Resolution that you heard before. I need a formal approval from the board for the six-year, six-year construction plan for FY twenty-three through FY twenty-eight.
So moved.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I got several, I'll accept it. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, on the county minister request is the VDOT Route Seven Fifty-One Abandonment Resolution. Y'all have had time to look at this, this is, and I'm, I'm gonna read from John, it's his notes, and they may ask you to elaborate. Back in the nineteen eighties, VDOT constructed a HUD, a HUD urban renewal and site and channel change on the Clinch River under VDOT Project Seven Zero Five Eight. This is where the St. Paul Sewer Treatment Plant is located. As part of the project Route Seven Fifty-One was demolished and is no longer there, it's in the river, right John? That's his words, not mine. So, eh, so I'm looking for a approval for a abandonment resolution on Route Seven Fifty-One.
So moved.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lester, and if I may, call on my VDOT guy here. I had a question concerning, it's going to cross the railroad there in South St. Paul. What's that gonna do to, so that, does that mean that you won't be working on the railroad area? Who, who gets that? Does that abandon, goes to the railroad property, or where does it go to?
The abandonment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the portion that's on the railroad right of way, yes, does revert to the railroad because it was on their property to begin with. The other part is incorporated in the right of way where they did the channel change and the HUD urban renewal site.
Yes, but if I wanted to use that site in the future, would this deter that?
No, no. Bush Place that comes in off of Fifty-Eight that comes down by the sewage treatment plant that accesses the HUD site?
I'm on the other side of the river, though. I'm over on the side of South St. Paul that accesses that little piece of, I don't know, it's the south side of the river that's gonna go across that railroad. I just wanna know, would I be able to market that property? Or we, that's Russell County, be able to market that property at, at such a time when there could be other development within the state park system? That's just a question.
That would depend on the scope of your project. I don't know that I could answer that question for you right here. Okay, but if a new access was needed, a new right of way could be provided.
Do you think the railroad would have, would this get into railroad discussion and they are their own nation, you know?
Um, yes.
I'm on a live mic, so I'm, I know what I'm saying.
I know full well what you're saying.
Okay.
It's their world, we just live in it.
Yes.
So, yes, you would very much have to deal with the railroad in such a case.
So if we abandon this, from this point A to point B that you've got, now I understand the channel, I understand that completely. Can we back point A back across and abandon it further down and not be, and not deal with that piece where it goes across the railroad?
You could, I mean technically, you could. But at that point, I mean, it doesn't provide a public service at this point to warrant maintenance at VDOT expense anyway. Okay?
I just don't want the railroad to shut it down. And I don't think they can because the land, there's landowners on the other side, so they cannot close the crossing at all. They cannot take the access.
Then it reverts to a private crossing for those individuals to have the right access.
And then those of us who needed to use it for public use. Help me.
Is eliminated.
Right.
I need an attorney here.
Well, John, could, what if it was to, what if it was not abandoned but discontinuance rather than abandonment?
Then it remains a public right of way and it's under your all's jurisdiction. And you assume, you assume the liability for it.
Yes.
If you abandon it, it goes away and you don't have a liability and neither does VDOT.
Okay.
You own it.
I'm not owning that for all season. Okay, we're in discussion, I'm sorry, I don't wanna chase a rabbit. But those were questions that I needed to have answered, and that's gonna cut off, that's gonna cut off some property right there that may be accessible for who knows what. I just don't wanna close any doors. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we're in discussion. Mr. Lester?
Do you, do you wanna do some further due diligence on this before you, 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 you on the table and go back? It's, that is in the town's footprint, right? The discontinuance on the Seven Fifty-One, right John? That's in, that's in the town. At St. Paul.
Yes, that is in the name.
Have we talked to the town, and I apologize, John, and not to make it hard on you. Do, maybe we need to talk to the town about what their future plans or if they have an issue with it, do you? Or do you, it's up to the, it's a discretion of the board.
That may be a good question because we're, and I don't wanna belabor this, and I know I am, but as a new organization is starting up to take care of the entire Clinch River Valley, these could be opportunities that we're losing somewhere along the way. Now, I'm not for sure that we are, but just saying that that could be usable property in several years from now. And that is South St. Paul, that is all Russell County, it just happens to be in the town of St. Paul, it's across the river.
Right.
Because with the park going in, with the park going in and the rest, they're looking at, you know, multiple, what VDOT calls connectivity, we went through that connectivity report, yes. So. So I'll, I'll leave you at the discretion of the board, how about?
We have a motion and a second and we're in discussion, so what are we gonna do? Vote it down? Ms. Patton?
You have to kill it, don't you?
To, yeah, you're gonna.
You have to kill it.
Let's just get a vote.
Well, no, you can, if you, so there's a motion on the table, you wanna table it?
Well.
Or do you want it to go away? I mean, there can be a motion to, to table it if you wanna do that, but if you, but if there's a motion, you have to vote.
We already have a motion, so we need an amendment to the, amendment to the, the.
To abandon right now?
Yes.
That's, that's the motion right now, to abandon.
We're abandoning it, and we're almost there without a vote.
But now we wanna back it out?
So you don't want to do that?
Not until we do a little bit more due diligence.
Well, you would, you would, you would make that subsidiary motion to, to table that, to table that to another time.
I'm good at those, but no. Jim, you wanna do that?
I'll, I'll make a subsidiary motion to table this until a future day.
To the county administrator.
To the county administrator to research it.
And VDOT and the town of St. Paul.
VDOT and town of St. Paul.
And, and for the public's information, that takes precedence over the motion that's on the, the main motion that's on the table. So we'll handle the subsidiary motion at this time.
We need to be a second.
We have a motion and we need a second.
A second then.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. So we have a motion and a second, and a subsidiary motion to table this motion that we've got. All in favor? Any discussion? Yes.
Is that gonna hurt, bother you in any way? I mean, is it gonna impact any of your work? I mean, delaying this, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Breeding, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Thank you all for bearing with me on that one, I apologize.
John, you and I will get with the, with the town, have a quick meet and I'll set that up.
Okay, moving on to VDOT Route Ten Eighty.
Yes, Rural Edition Resolution, North Cedar Acres, John?
One that you just. One that you just voted on to the six-year plan. We will do this one as a rural addition project, and we can construct it with state forces hired equipment. And it will be paid for out of the surplus balance on previous projects. So it doesn't affect any funding for any of the upcoming projects.
All right, we have a, I, I need a motion for this.
Motion to approve.
That was quick.
Second.
Second, all in favor, all discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. VDOT Route 1211.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, uh, this is on VDOT Route 1211, Cleveland Falls Barrens and Route 661 Cleveland Campground Recreational Access Fund Resolutions. This is asked for approval for submissions for recreational access funds for Route 1211 and Route 661. Right, John?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I need a motion.
Through the recreational access program, it's a different pot of money that we can get to improve accesses to publicly maintain recreational facilities, whether it be state or locality maintained.
All right, I need a motion for Route 1211.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, I need a second.
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, several seconds. I appreciate you guys. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the CD, CDBG Grant Resolution for the Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Project. This is a request for prior authorization of cost on the Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Project 21-2114.
I'll make that motion that we do that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to take on the grant resolution for the Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension, $2.5 million. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next one up is, of course, the DHCD Industrial Violation Fund, RF Planning Grant for $50,000. This is a MOU that's entered into on the 18th of March '22 between the Virginia Department of Housing Community Development and Russell County for the Dainte Steam Building Restoration Project. It is eligible for Industrial Violation Fund Planning Grant proposed for the, for the planning of these activities for this proposed project for $50,000. I need an acceptance for appropriation and allocation of $50,000 from DHCD concerning the Dainte Steam Building Restoration Project.
I'll make that motion, accept that.
Thank you, need a second?
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Where, where is this steam building located?
It's, um, it's directly across from the Dainte Coal and Railroad Museum. Well, it is kinda in the community.
I was thinking, I was thinking about another building that was way on it, Hazel Mountain up through there, but it was the Water Works Building, though.
Oh, yeah, that, that matches it almost, yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, with the $50,000 allocated for the planning grant, I need a, I need approval for the request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services for the Dainte Steam Building Restoration Project, a DHCD planning grant. I need approval for the RFQ.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to do an RFQ for the Dainte Steam Building Restoration Project. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county ministry request is the CSA Supplement Allocation Request for $34,916.93. This is for the Department of Social Services, this is for the, for services rendered, this is the locality share for supplement allocations for reimbursement for $34,916.93.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
What, we haven't seen one of these in a while. Was this just an overrun on expenses? Is that what it is?
This is that gap month, Steve, that, you know, we had discussed before that their budget ends, ends one, and yes, this is no additional funding, it's just appropriation we have to make by law legally, so.
So it pretty well eats up that $34,000 that we had left in the budget.
Well, it's a maybe. So, so, but we have to have it up on the front end.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on the county ministry request is the Regional Improvement Commission Appointment. This is an appointment by the Code of Virginia 58.1 for the Regional Improvement Commission concerning the casino, which is the Bristol Hardrec, Hard Rock Casino Gaming Proceeds. Each county or governing board may appoint one member within the, the casino's footprint. So, of course, they're trying to, under the Code of Virginia, the 58.1 for the Regional Improvement Commission, we need one appointee to this board to represent Russell County within the commission. I need approval for, an appointed.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion for this, but it also directs us to say that they're looking for an administrator or a deputy administrator, so I only know one of those or two of those right now, so I'm gonna entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make that a, a motion that we appoint someone to this committee. Now, administrator will be one side.
Thank you very much. We have our county administrator, Mr. Lester, as the person to be appointed. Any discussion? Oh, I've got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
And I will say, Mr. Lester, you come back with some tourism dollars in that, because it talks about transportation dollars, but, and we all know we need that, but we need some, we need some tourism bucks in that, too.
Russell County will get its fair share.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we're moving on to number 13.
Russell County Tourism Committee, Jim Little resignation. So I need a, that is before the board for a reappointment. I don't know if they're ready or not. If not, then I'll, we'll move it to the next agenda.
I'm ready. If you all are. It's not on the.
We have an application, I think. We all got.
First we need to, first we need to accept Mr. Little's resignation.
Yes, that is correct.
So I'll make the motion that we accept that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of Jim Little from the Tour, Tac, the Tourism Committee for Russell County. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Jim? We thank you.
Thank you very much.
We lose one and, and gain but, yes.
I would, and I would like to, in, in his place, nominate Carly Brook to, to be on that committee, please.
Okay, we have an application from Carly Brook, and she's in Tim's district at the recommendation of the Tac Committee, I gotta say that. So I'll, yeah, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, David. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last item on the Russell County Administrator's request is the board supervisors, the July 20, uh, July, the regular meeting date, of course, the first Monday is on July the 4th, so to give ample time, because we know the budgets are coming up, go ahead and set that, you know, if possible. What's the fireworks dates between three towns? You got, the 5th is the Tuesday, or the 11th is the following week. And remember, this is at your new fiscal year, so.
What's that gonna do to paying the bills?
I'm not concerned about paying the bills because we're still within the timeframe, and if I have to at the next board meeting, I can ask for your approval on the June bills, so.
All right.
That, that y'all don't need concern about, because it's the end of the year anyway, and y'all spend all the money, so. They like that, didn't you? No, I'm teasing.
Could we move it to the next week? Because a lot of people take that whole week of July off, you know, they take a vacation. So, could we move it to the next week? Would that help folks?
There's member vacations during this time, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, the 11th or 12th, any of that, I mean, the next week, is that suit, child? Would that be okay? I think I have a meeting on the 11th. I'm sorry, I apologize, you all. Can we do it on the 12th? Is that okay? What?
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
That is, is. All right. I mean, that's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Uh, see, wait a minute, that's our VDOT meeting, ain't it?
Oh, okay, sorry. Well, just trying to think. A lot of folks use that whole week of July as a vacation, you know? They extend that time off.
What is, okay, so we're look, we're completely X-ing off the first week in July, I mean, that first week that we usually normally meet. Okay.
14th, Carl? Thursday?
Wow.
Be sure.
It's gonna be down in August.
Going to us.
A consensus here?
13th.
I don't wanna do it on Wednesday night church.
That's church.
That's right, that's right, 12th. And that's gonna.
That's 14th.
Oh, dear. Okay. All right. The 14th looks good down here, except for Steve.
Yeah, I'll, it, I'll make the second.
Okay, so it looks like we're doing July 14th, 2022 for the July board meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Make it motion.
I guess you need to. Yes, please. All right.
And Madam Chair, if I may add on to the change of the July 22 regular meeting to the 14th. Also ask tonight, due to the extended date of the resolution and the state budget issues, that the board supervisors reconvened in the month of May for a workshop.
Okay, everybody, get, get out your calendars for May, and, um, dear Lord, okay. How, how far down in May do you need to push this thing? Because what, what's the General Assembly saying? Two weeks, three weeks out?
It depends on, it depends on which one is at the podium at the time.
Yes, well, um.
Let me explain to the Russell County citizens, exactly 10 years ago, this happened. And the housing center had an issues, they were 150 million apart then. That's, and it ran until, until August. They're 3 billion apart now, so that's, I would plan for the worst, so more active planning, so. Of course, day is May the 2nd, so as, as, as quickly as that we can have at least two to three workshops that we would have already had before now, and if they gave us the numbers, to start with, you know, the 10th through the 12th, or the 17th through the 19th, or 24th through 26th. I don't know how you can have a workshop until you know what's gonna come down the pike. I mean, you can.
I, I know.
You can estimate, but.
Are we just gonna play with numbers?
Well.
I'm with Mr. Eaton here.
Well, and, and I'm with you, too, and that was one of my reservations. Until we know what we're going to be doing, what we're gonna have to look at, but there are certain things that you're gonna have to look at, even whether the, the money comes down from the state or not.
I agree.
Yes.
You look at a worst-case scenario, and you look at a favorable, most favorable scenario.
The middle of the month.
Yeah, that way you're not trying to do all the discussion at one of the meeting, once the money does come down, you were trying to, and you ju, so it'd be good just for.
The middle of May is the 16th, Monday evening, the 16th. All right, and so if we're gonna fast-track this thing, so if, we might know something by the 16th, doubtful, but we might. All right, so then, then we could just, I guess, have our other two in the end of that week or the next week following, and just go ahead and just kill it, I guess.
Yeah, what I would recommend, if you set the one for the 16th, we'll play it. If it comes viable at that time, you could go ahead and reconvene at that time as more information starts coming in. I would only set the first workshop right now until you see, because it may be August. I, we do not know. Again, this is a state issue, but at least it gets us on getting some of the stuff out of the way, the contracts, you know.
Are you comfortable with the 16th, or you wanna push it somewhere else? That was just a number I was, that guy was throwing out.
That's two weeks from now, so I would be comfortable with the 16th.
All right. What's everybody else feel like? Make a motion, let's do it.
I'll make a motion.
A workshop is usually in the day.
We're gonna reconvene this meeting.
Yes.
So you don't need a motion to say you're agreeable to the 16th?
In, at the end, we'll make a motion.
All right, we'll do that.
Usually it's in the morning or in the afternoon, after lunch or in the morning, so.
All right, but everybody, all hearts are clear on the 16th, and we can work on the time.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Shoot, it's getting complicated. Wow. All right, um.
Well, we don't, yeah, they did that.
Yeah, we're just gonna, uh, we're, yes, we're gonna adjourn to reconvene on the 16th, if all hearts are clear on that.
Well, I'll take back that motion until the end of the meeting.
Okay, that'll be fine. All right, next thing we have is board discussions and reminders. I'm gonna go down the line here and see what we got going on. Mr. Levlich, you got anything?
Actually, nothing, but I do, do wanna thank the Russell County Vocational School, the Horticultural Program for these hanging baskets we've got tonight.
Oh, lovely. Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ray?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes, I've got just a couple of things. Uh, I wanna thank Chris Vance, Officer Chris Vance, the Department of Social Services, the principals, schools, everybody that participated in the prom promise. I went out there and participated in Honeacre, it was a great event. I think it enlightened the kids to let them know what it, what can happen if you drink and drive or text and drive. I just wanna send out a, a thank you. I know they done it at Castlewood, Leaven, and Honeacre, and there was a lot of participation. I think the kids really got involved in it, so I wanna thank them for that. Also, don't know how to do this, I guess as far as, but back when some appointments was made, Ms. Di made a, a comment there that since she was the chair lady, she needed to be on the SIFIA board, uh, because that's what the recommendation was for her to be. Well, now that she's not chair lady, I'd like to see Ms. Wallace on the SIFIA board, uh, since if that's the way it's gonna be as far as, and you can look back in the minutes, and the comment was made that Ms. Di said that that was the recommendation from whoever for her to be on that, because she was the chair lady. Well, now that she's not the chair lady, I would like to entertain an opportunity for Ms. Wallace to be on there, because it has, it has a huge impact, uh, and, and actually you need, you know, the leader of the board to be involved in that, so. I'd like to make a motion that we put Ms. Wallace on that in place of Ms. Di, because she is now the chair lady.
Second.
Well, I know we have a motion and a second, so we're just gonna have to run it, but now we normally are just under discussion, so, we might need to think about that, if you don't mind. Would you retract it?
Well, I mean.
We can talk about it.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
She made the comment that it was recommended that it be the chairperson.
Let's.
And that's the reason I was took off. So, uh, I think in, in all fairness, it needs to be you.
Well, let's, um, I appreciate that, I do. I appreciate your confidence. And, um, but there's a lot of things, a lot of historical things going on right now that I'd just be getting into the middle of it. But anyway, I'll let the board decide, so we'll just entertain a motion, I guess. We've got it, and I'd really rather not let it run like this. We're under discussion, so don't do me this way, you know, David.
Well, I mean, you're the chair lady. I just felt like that, you know, that's the position that needs to be held.
So we can discuss, okay. Well, anyway. I got a motion and a second. You wanna run it or not? You wanna fin me, go ahead. All right. Any discussion more than mine?
Nope.
All right. All in favor? All right, all in favor?
Uh, uh.
Any opposed? I'm a no.
Well, I mean, as, you know, as things progress, I'm.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I didn't see that coming, so I really didn't, that's not what I was looking for, but okay, thank you. Um, anyway, now you've got me all bumfuzzled again.
You need to let me grow next.
Oh, Steve, do I need to go to you now? Okay, please don't do a motion, okay? All right.
I won't, I promise. I wanna ask about, how many surplus vehicles do we have now?
Two.
Two? I became aware that, I was talking to Sharon Owens, who's at the technical school, says there's a lot of kids out there that are in need of transportation.
Not these, the, we got.
They don't care what it's like. I told her these are bad vehicles. I think we need to explore the possibility of maybe donating, maybe to the workforce or some group that could take those vehicles and use them, you know, issue them to maybe one or two kids that they can. These kids apparently don't have any transportation, they can't, they can't even get to a pickup point for the bus to ride. So I'd just like to look into that, maybe talk to the workforce people and I'll ask Sharon who she was working with, you know? But there's a program, they can pay, they can pay, uh, you know, expenses and such, they might be able to do some work on those vehicles. I'd rather do those than just do something like that. It's gonna be some benefit if they can, you know, use them.
Let's talk about this more later too, cause I, cause the ones I got right now, there is such bad shit.
I told her, I said, these have probably got a couple hundred thousand miles on them.
They're worth more in metal than they are worth driving right now.
Well.
They're two sitting down at the lot. They've tried, the workforce.
You hadn't tried to buy a used car lately, have you?
No.
Okay.
The work, I'll put it to you this way, the two I got sitting down there, the community work program turned them in, cause they'd already ran them out, so that's.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let's run it by these people and see, you know, if we can be put to any beneficial use on all four.
All right, we'll do.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dy?
No, don't have anything, thanks.
Mr. Christian?
Housekeeper for this time.
Okay, and I don't have anything, so, um, at this time, I will entertain a motion. This is not normally how we end things, but around here, but I will entertain a motion to, adjourn to reconvene on May.
Sixteen.
Thank you.
May sixteen.
The fourteenth, David, why did I write that down?
I'll make that motion.
All right, time, we haven't got a time at all.
No, usually after lunch, isn't it, so that.
You can do the morning or you can do the afternoon, it's up to you.
Afternoon's probably better.
I can do an afternoon.
I'd rather do afternoon. Three to five?
Three to five, everybody. Yes.
Yes, okay. I'll include that in my motion.
Okay.
On May the sixteenth, Monday, to reconvene from three to five.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you very much. We are.